Evening everyone, this is the Fairmont Area School Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, August 11th, 2015. Our roll call this- Evening everyone, this is the Fairmont Area School Board Meeting. It's Tuesday, August 11th, 2015. Our roll call this evening, as all members of our school board are present, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to the minutes from our last meeting, which was held on July 14th. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
I have, and I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th meeting.
Thank you, Dan, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Nicole. I have a motion by Dan, a second by Nicole, to approve the July 14th, 2015, school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then if you look at your agenda, under Celebrations and School and Community Reports, after the Why We Play with Matt Mahoney, we will have a resolution on the renewal for the Minnesota State High School League participation, and Dan will cover that one. And if you look at, under Employment, and B, Under Employments, number seven, Brooke Schultz is, she's going to be a fifth grade teacher, so we'll just make an adjustment to Elementary Special Ed to fifth grade. And then Contracts, Rufus will be handling that, so you can add his name to Contracts, and C. And any other additions, corrections to the agenda? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda with those corrections.
Thank you, Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. A motion by Julie, second by Rufus, to approve the August 11th, 2015, school board meeting agenda with the corrections noted. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well then, we'll move to the Celebrations, School and Community Reports, and we have a Minnesota State High School League report, and it's called Why We Play, and Matt Mahoney is here to talk about that and show us a video this evening. Hello?
Hello, good evening. It's good to be here. I'm here kind of to talk to you guys a little bit about Why We Play. This is a new thing that's coming out. It's actually been around about three years now. And I'll kind of give you a little history here in a second. And with that, they're asking all the schools in the state of Minnesota to renew our membership, but they want to bring up every school board's attention to kind of Why We Play. And this is a new movement. Jody Redman from the Minnesota State High School League is really pushing this. I think about every time I have a state AD conference, or we have our area meetings, this topic keeps coming up. 2010, when I took over as the AD from Randy Solma, Randy was talking to me a lot about, Matt, there's this new thing out there, it's called Continuing Ed with the Minnesota State High School League. And basically what it is, there's four things that we have to do as a head coach and any other assistant coaches that are coaching kids in grades 10 through 12. So we have to go on there, we have to do about four different things. It's just a small class, it's about 25 minutes, and then you have to answer a few questions. And so now I've had to do that two times now. About three years ago, they started this Why We Play. And it's a movement to not really push the win factor, but it's more of the purpose factor. And again, in this video here that I'm about to show you guys, this really kind of brings it all into play. But where we're at as a school district, like I said, it took place about three years ago, we as a Big South Conference, when we were starting to put this conference together, one of the things that all the ADs said is, you know what we should do is we should get together as a conference and have all of our coaches, our administration, our ADs, everybody that can attend this, attend it. So last August, we had a Why We Play Conference in Jackson. All 13 schools of the Big South were there, and Jody Redman, she came down and presented, and kind of we walked away with some information. If you take a look at the handout that we did, that we have, that I gave you guys, there is a Fairmont Area Schools' Purpose Statement that again, I'll read that once I get through this. So we're actually kind of a step ahead in the game compared to other schools. We have, I don't know, a handful of coaches that did get that training. And as we go forward from here on out, one of the things that every coach is going to have to do is write their own Purpose Statement. You can see mine down at the bottom. And part of, the other thing with our Continuing Ed, in order for me as the head football coach to be able to participate in the playoffs, I have to have my rules done. I have to have all of my, you know, my four different CR renewals up to speed. I already got all that done. And the other thing that they have on there now is Why We Play. So when I was taking my test, on Sunday, I believe, Sunday morning, I went together and I put together my purpose, my Purpose Statement. So that's kind of the history, kind of the background on it. We will get to the video. After the video, I'll just kind of, I kind of put it into a small, kind of summarize it a little bit into some common language that I think you guys need to know. And the question that I do have for you guys is number four there, you know, how will success be defined in our school district? And then I'll follow up, finish up with our Purpose Statements. So this time, I'm going to show a video.
I think the culture of sport is broken. Success is defined by winning, by having more points on the scoreboard at the end of the day than the other team. That's where the value lies. And whose name is in the paper the next day? And who had the most points? And who had the most rebounds? And who won the game? And who gets to the championship?
It's the reason why we do it.
The Minnesota State High School League's Jody Redman is passionate about developing the human potential of students. She's leading a national movement to reclaim the purpose of sports.
The pressure to win, and sometimes at all costs, is significant. Kids feel it. They feel it from their coaches, they feel it from their parents, they feel it from friends. They feel the pressure to be able to win.
When we think of how our culture values high school sports today, certainly words come to mind, and that of former coach and NFL star, Joe Irman.
Struggle.
Expectations.
Regressive.
Trophies.
Ooh.
Win at all costs.
Lack of value.
Win at all costs.
Of missed opportunities.
Zero fun, sir.
Zero fun. Misguided.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunate, sad.
When we look at education-based athletics and what a trophy means, I think it's about the experience. It's about what did we provide those students that was life-sustaining through trying to get the trophy?
Today's student athletes feel the pressure to compete at a high level, so they drop out of sports. Seventy percent quit by the age of 13, and they miss out on a big educational benefit.
There's a University of Kansas study that draws a correlation between kids who participate and are involved in high school athletic and activity programs. Students that are involved in those activities do much better academically than students who are not. The research shows that the reason for that is school connectedness.
It's been amazing what we've learned.
Five years ago, Mountain View High School began to survey their students, asking what they really get from being involved in the school's athletic and activity programs.
I was shocked to find out that our coaches and advisors are equally as important in the lives of our students as our teachers. It was a game changer for us. Our whole district, where we're going and how we value activities, it's not after-school, it's part of the educational process. It is no longer an extra. We've defined that, and it's something that we value every bit as much as what they do during the school day.
The purpose of high school athletic programs is not to develop college or professional athletes. In fact, most students, 97%, will not play organized sports after they graduate. Instead, these powerful mentors, we call coaches, have four years to make a difference in kids' lives, to teach them life lessons that will help prepare them to be successful in life.
Well, I will be honest, our goal is to win. Our goal in many sports is to win a state championship.
Winning has a place, and there is value in learning how to win. However, that's not our purpose.
Our purpose is to enjoy that experience, enjoy their teammates, enjoy their coaches, and learn from whatever took place on the field or the quarter on the Madison that given day.
Our purpose isn't the score at the end of the game. The purpose is the growth and development that comes through trying to achieve that win.
Three objectives I have, I want to be a better baseball player, a better teammate, and a better person at the end of the year.
We're working with coaches to develop their own Purpose Statement.
Well, why do I coach the way that I do? It comes because I had a couple of coaches in my life that touched me and changed my life.
Joe Irman has been called the most important coach in America and a leading voice for change in how we coach our kids in sports today.
Why do you coach? Is it about you, or is it about your players?
A transactional coach is basically a coach that uses his platform and position for his own self-edification, for his own identity, his own empowerment, at the expense of the development of their players. It's kind of, if you meet my needs, my demands as a transactional coach, then I'll give you praise, and I'll give you praise, some kind of plaudits. But it's basically using young people.
As a child growing up, I had a lot of transactional coaches when I was younger, because I was a very talented kid. Once I got to high school, my head coach, I didn't have a dad, so my head coach was my dad. And he showed me I'm more than just an athlete.
Transformational coaches basically understand the power of platform position they have in the lives of young people, and they're going to use that to change the arc of every young person's life, to help them develop morally, ethically, socially, and emotionally. Transformational coaches mentor young people. And to mentor, you have to build a relationship with people. Transactional coaches do nothing but monitor young people. They move them from drill to drill, season to season, no relationship, no contact.
When I first started coaching, I only had one goal, and that was to win at all costs. I don't use that term lightly, I know how it sounds, and I'm not very happy with who I was as a coach then, now looking back.
To be a better coach, you got to be a better you.
And now, our focus is much more on what I'll call trying to build a team family within the chemistry of our individual teams that I coach, and trying to find ways for our athletes to grow as people.
Get excited, can't wait, let's go.
Every day, Coach Troy Kors works hard to keep his purpose alive in everything he does, and he's helping his team's student athletes to do the same.
What three words would identify you as an athlete, particularly you as an individual, and what do you want to get out of this sport?
Family.
Okay, I'll come in.
Because you basically feel like a family. You can like go to them for anything, they'll help you with anything.
The word I chose was friendship. I love going track practice, hanging out with people I know, and just getting to know them.
Go!
I chose responsibility, because I feel like you have to be able to rely on others, and you should be reliable yourself.
I'm going to take five, you have six, you have seven.
I grabbed three words as well in mind that goes like this. I coach to create positive relationships with my athletes so they know I care about them, while striving to be an authentic leader who they can trust as we both work together to discover joy in our sport and through competition.
That's a good time, thirteen, six, five. Nicely done, well done, well done.
I'm mostly in track, just to have fun. Just because I'm not the best doesn't mean it's a problem.
The big group's kind of like family to me.
For me, it looks like we're enjoying ourselves more. The idea of sharing something, enjoying each other's company and being a part of a sport we love to play. For me, that's been the biggest change I see.
For a coach to withstand the pressure of the current win-at-all-costs sports culture and to truly be invested in transforming the lives of students, there must be support. Support from school leaders, parents, and the community. For this to happen, we must want more for our kids than just wins, losses, and a good performance.
We want to give them more. We want to give them a significant experience that's going to help them develop into people that are going to live in our community. We want to give them a way of being successful that will sustain them throughout their lifetime, not just until the season's over. So we have to align school communities around this idea that we are purpose-based, we're education-based.
I want school boards to reclaim sports in the name of education. I think school boards need to make sure that we move away from this win-at-all costs. We need to start moving the system where coaches are held accountable for the transformative impact they have in the lives of their students.
It really boils down to, what do we want to give our children? Beyond the trophy, beyond just the win and the loss. Beyond the trophy case.
Hopeful.
Filled with potential.
And a great character.
Yeah.
Confusion and mistake-making rocks.
And every child who loved and belongs.
Connected.
Greater relational capacity.
Wow. You're a rocket. What else you got in there?
So that's the video. I guess some of the common language that I kind of pulled out of there, as you can see, it has a definition of a goal, and then it talks about the definition of a purpose. And, you know, I've been coaching, this is hard to believe, but this is my ninth year as head football coach, and every single year, when I have my parent meeting, which will be next Monday, I always start that meeting with my goals. And at the bottom of my goal, it's to win a state championship. And I think I'm going to start my meeting next Monday with my purpose, followed up by my goals. Because it says, it does say in there that the goal is to win, is to score a thousand points, is to be, you know, your all-conference player. And it's, that's not what we're trying to get at. It's the education, it's the purpose. And is there any questions, I mean, on any of this as of right now? I really, I really kind of bought into this today, especially with my Purpose Statement. Our guys were all, we've had two great days of football practice, and today they had to run, and they had to touch a line, and they had to go back. And some of them were coming up short, they weren't bending all the way down, and I was getting on them, getting on them, and they finally figured it out, and then when, at the very end, I brought them all back in together, and I said, this is the little things, okay? This is the purpose, this is what we're doing. If we can't do this stuff, we're never ever going to be able to do it on Friday night. And I think it kind of really hit home on some of those guys. And, you know, in order for us to be successful this year, we have to figure out what our purpose is. And if we can figure out what our purpose is, I think our goals will take place after that. So I guess, and I truly believe too, as the AD, now this is going into my fifth year as AD, I truly believe we got some darn good coaches that truly do care about the kids, and I don't think it's, it's not about winning to some of these coaches. I think of Coach Bonk and how many lifetime friendships that he has with his former students and athletes that he has developed over his cross-country and track coaching career. And he's just, he's just the one that came to my mind, because he was my coach. And we have definitely others that have built an unbelievable relationship with kids, and I think they do have a purpose, and it's not necessarily about winning. So from where I'm standing, if we can develop that purpose and really educate our kids and our parents, I think we'll have more success down the road. My question to you guys is, I guess, is how will success be defined in our school district? Does anybody have something that we can walk out here with?
Yeah, I think this is great, Matt. And it's long overdue, because, you know, my experience has been, I've seen a lot of transactional coaching, and, you know, and we've got some really great coaches, but it's not consistent all the time.
Right.
And there's also transactional parenting.
Right.
You know, that complicates the issue. So I think it's a matter of making sure that the parents are on board.
Yep.
And also follow up with the kids, because the kids will tell us what their experience has been.
Right.
And so we need to, you know, how are we going to measure it? We're going to measure it on, you know, how the kids rate, you know, rate the coaches.
Yep.
And so I think, you know, during the season, at the end of the season, I think we need to poll the kids.
Yep.
And poll the parents and find out, and make sure that,
that, you know, that we are changing the game. Yep.
Because this is not easy. Because there, this is, you know, playing to win is big, and it's been, that's been the way it's been done for so many years.
Right.
And so it's going to take some effort to change.
Yep, yep. You know, one of the things that we do do is we do give out surveys to kids at the end of their sports season, and that does go very well. I was, I was reading somewhere, after Jerry Rosberg, that Baltimore Ravens won Super Bowl. And Jerry Rosberg, he is a special teams coordinator for the Baltimore Ravens. He was an actual former Fairmont grad. And one of the things, one of the best things that he, that he, that he said was, every coach should be evaluated by how many students, players, return back to their sport that following year. Because there's a lot of kids that we do lose throughout the, you know, you know, we got football kids that, you know, didn't come out this year, you know, because maybe they didn't like me, or they don't like the game of football, or they know they can't play, or whatnot. But that's one thing that I, that I really took away from Jerry Rosberg is, is, you know, some of those good coaches are bringing those kids back every single year. Maybe because they love the sport, maybe it's because their friends are out, but it's because of that relationship with that head coach, so.
And like the one kid said, I may not be the best.
Yep.
And that's what we should give, is the kids opportunities to be a part of something other than coming to school for that. You know, the kids on the margins, who, you know, maybe, like the one coach didn't have a dad. So, you know, those kids, we need to give them, empower them that there's opportunities for them also to be a part of something.
Yep. And I, and I think we do have some kids that are, you know, kids that are not our star players, but they just love being part of the team and being part of, you know, with their friends, and just being, staying active, you know. And on a good note, you know, I don't, I haven't seen our registration numbers for our high school, but we have 412 kids right now signed up for a fall sport, fall activity. So our registration numbers for activities have been phenomenal. Kind of my fifth point here, talks about Fairmont's Purpose Statement. Like I said, last August, over in Jackson, as a group, we kind of came up with this Purpose Statement. And one of the things that we had to do was, we had this big old poster, you guys might have saw it on the, on the video, and it just kind of talks about the core values. And there's a bunch of different words right here, and we had to pick out basically three on me. So I went up there, I put my sticker up there and said, I like these three. And then Joe had to go up there and put his three up. And at the end of the day, we said, okay, well, wow, we're really big on respect. And I think most of the coaches all had respect. Commitment and responsibility were our other two. So we basically, as a group, we came up with this Purpose Statement. Fairmont Area Schools will foster an environment for student athletics and activities where commitment, responsibility, and respect for others is a source of pride for our students, athletes, coaches, parents, school, and community. I think it's, it was hit right on the head. Matt Nielsen was the one that really did a lot of this, and I think we were all kind of like, wow, this is good. Jody Redman, she actually came in, and when we were kind of talking as a, as a group, she's like, wow, that's one of the better ones that we've seen before. And then what I did is, like I said on Sunday, I just kind of put together my Purpose Statement. It says, my coaching purposes falls and instill responsibility into my football players on the football field and in the classroom. I want them to understand and demonstrate accountability in every aspect of their lives, and to be honest with their coaches, teammates, but most importantly, themselves. So I think we're going down the right direction, I guess. Maybe where I'm going to go from here is, I'm going to take this, I have a coaches meeting with all of our coaches on Tuesday. So I'm going to take this to the meeting, I'm going to do the exact same thing, I'm going to have them write down, there are three things, and on the backside, I'm going to have them write down what their Purpose Statement is. And so then I'm going to type it all up and get it out to all the coaches so that every coach now has a Purpose Statement. So that's kind of where I'm going to go as far as what I'm taking away from this.
Is that, you mean head coaches?
Just the head coaches.
Yeah, and then, so then, how it trickles down is then you instill that in your, your Purpose Statement also, is also the Purpose Statement for your coaches at football?
Yep, yep. And so just an example, Brad Johnson and Chris Voss, they're two of my assistant football coaches. When they go onto their coaches ed, Continuing Ed webpage, they have a spot now to put their Purpose Statement. So, you know, it can, it can reflect mine, it can be very similar to mine, but it could also be something that, you know what, this is what I want to get out of coaching, this is my purpose. It might be different than Matt's, but here's my purpose. So I think this is good stuff, I think we're going down the right direction. I think we got a lot of work to do. But like I said, I think we're going in the right direction.
And every, it's not going to be an overnight change, it's a process, and we're going to have to take steps to get there, and one step at a time, and we'll do fine, you know? Kids are so important, that's what we are all here about. So we touch one kid, we're making a step in the right direction, so.
I think this will really help with building relationships with coaches and parents and, and the kids, so. I think this is good, any questions?
To me, this, it has a lot of similarities to the Top 20 Training that we do, and you talk about cultivating the good things inside people, and that's coaching, but, you know, that's also us in our adult lives. You know, if you're supervising other people at work, or just, you know, just generally trying to get along in the world, the lessons that you're learning now and instilling are going to carry over into your adult life, no matter what you're doing, whether you're going to be involved in education or athletics, or whatever you're involved in. It becomes part of the way you deal with, that's your personal relationships that you have when you're older. So to do this now is the critical point, I think.
Yep.
Of, you know, when, when kids reach this age, this is the time where you're learning those most important of behaviors, I think.
Yep. The other thing that I really like about it is that it really puts, in a way, for those coaches, this is what I want to get out of my season, you know? For me, like I said before, in order for us to be successful on Friday nights, these guys got to be responsible, they got to make good decisions, you know? Last year, we had kids that were getting detentions and missing weight rooms, and so they had to sit out a quarter, they had to sit out a half, and it hurt us, you know? They have to be accountable, they have to show up on time, and they have to be honest, not just with me, but with themselves and their parents and their teachers. So I think this kind of really gives me a good backbone to put onto my players as well, saying that this is what we got to do in order to be successful. And like I said, if we can do that, we're going to win some games.
Because in society, haven't we seen cheating on the professional level? And it's almost rampant.
It's everywhere.
Really?
Yeah.
In every sport, there's something. So that's not the role models we want to look up to, and we can see how far down they have fallen, too, that we're up on the pedestal, and winning at all costs was their goal.
Yep.
Or was their purpose, too.
Right.
That's how they lived their life, you know, and cheating or whatever.
Yep.
Not good, so.
Yep. Anything else?
Good luck this season in football, too.
Thanks, Matt.
And maybe we'll have a state championship, because that's the goal, but, you know, the joy of the journey is also very, very important, so.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it, you know? It's hard to believe, we got three practices already. We got two, four, five, six left to go this week, and then we have a game week from Saturday. So it's just, it's an unbelievable year.
Okay, so you might want to say, the game is what date?
It's, it'll be August 22nd, 10:30 a.m. It's the Saturday of the Martin County Fair. We are playing at 10:30 in the morning. The main reason for that is, we're not going to try and compete with the Martin County Fair. I think it's what, 125, 150-year celebration this year? So we got a lot of people that want to be out there, and we got a lot of workers that work out there. So we're not going to play at 7 o'clock, and, well, we can't play at 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the afternoon because it's going to be hot. So, you know, a lot of people are so accustomed to having Friday night football games. Well, every Saturday morning, I'm up at, you know, at the Gophers and they play at eleven o'clock. So I think it's going to be a different atmosphere. I think it's going to be a fun atmosphere. And the other thing is our kids are practicing in the morning. So they're used to it. They're used to getting up. They're used to playing football at, at ten o'clock in the morning. So I, I don't, it's going to be a harder change for, for everybody else other than, than us.
Who's your opponent?
Blue Earth area, so.
All right, at Blue Earth and it's at Fairmont?
Fairmont.
At Mahoney Field in Fairmont?
Yep.
Okay, so don't forget.
Don't forget, be there.
Yeah?
All right.
Cool.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then with that information, now we need to do the resolution for the renewal of the Minnesota State High School League. And Dan, you want to read that for us?
Sure. Resolved that the governing board of school district number twenty-seven fifty-two, county of Martins, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that Fairmont area high school is authorized to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League. And further resolved that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the league's official handbook. And with that, I introduce the resolution.
All right, thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Julie with the second. And then we have to, is there any further discussion on that item? Then we voice, vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. All right, so a little paperwork to do with that. Then we'll move on. The next thing on our agenda is the superintendent's report in the calendars. Superintendent Brown?
Thank you, Diane. On the calendars, a busy couple of weeks coming up. First of all, on, this coming Monday and Tuesday, August seventeenth and eighteenth, we'll have the new teacher workshop. And we do have eighteen new faculty that will be joining our staff this year. And that meeting will be held in the Bud Room of Fairmont Elementary School. And if any of the board members are available anytime, just to stop in and say hi and introduce yourself, that would be great. But that will be really important two days for the new teacher workshop. The, just another note about that too. Next, the next two Mondays, a Rotary Club is going to meet at Fairmont Elementary in the three-six cafeteria. They needed a place to have their meetings and their lunch will be catered by Chartwell's. And Jackie Lemay is going to be the guest speaker next Monday to talk about the different nutrition programs. And then on the back of the pink sheet, there's more detailed information about the new teacher workshops. August twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Coach, you said your game is what, August?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Thank you. Twenty-second. August twenty-seventh, new teacher workshop days. And, you know, Dan mentioned about top twenty. In fact, last year when we had the why you play, or why we play presentation, the top twenty people were there also. And they co-presented this. But I just want to remind the board that the top twenty folks are coming to town again. I'm going to pass this out to the board. And there is a, in the morning session on the twenty-seventh, the top twenty folks are going to be presenting to our, our faculty and support staff and administration. And it's going to be, the topic is going to be being an effective teacher. And the real focus is trying to make sure that all children are connected, that we engage all students in their academic activities this year. And then on the twenty-eighth at, in the morning, from eight o'clock to eleven-thirty, there's a special breakout session that is available. This is also free of charge and this is for community leaders and school board members are being invited. You, you folks are being invited now. I did send out invitations to all the other school boards in our Martin County area, including North Union. Invited their boards to come. We invited city council members to come, mayors and county commissioners to come. And that's going to be focused on leaders and the topic there is leading from the inside out. So the top twenty people will be here that Thursday and Friday. I just read an article about them. I guess it was in the Sentinel about that in the last ten years, they have now trained a half a million people, five hundred thousand people. And so it's really great to have them back again. We had them two years ago and they were a big head. We also have some training going on at the, at the elementary school for the reading gen, reading curriculum. Remember that's a new reading curriculum that we'll be implementing at the elementary this year. That will be on Monday, August thirty-one. And then the Cardinal Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, September one. And that will be held at Gomms Street Park from five o'clock to six thirty. We have some back to school conferences on the second and third. And then, of course, the first day of classes for all students, grades E through twelve will be Tuesday, September eighth, the day after Labor Day. So it's a busy couple of weeks. I just want to do a personal thank you right now to all the individuals that served on interview committees this summer. With hiring eighteen people, I'm not sure exactly how many people we interviewed, but it was quite a few. And of course, the administrative team was involved in each of those interviews. And we had a lot of teachers that came in on their own time and volunteered their own time to come in and sit on those interview committees. We feel it's very important that if you're going to hire an English teacher, that the English department should be involved in those interviews. And the same thing with social studies and special ed. So I just want to thank everyone for that. And that's it.
All right. Any questions for Superintendent Brown from anyone? All right, then let's move to financial business. We have a donation, Dan.
In appendix A, I would introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the Fairmont Area Football Association donated equipment and uniforms totaling ten thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Whereas no conditions are placed on this gift, therefore be resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift. And the, the gifts provided included buying new football pants for the junior high teams and new practice jerseys and pants for the high school teams, as well as twenty new concussion resistant football helmets. Also a camcorder and a laptop computer in that amount of ten thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars. So I would introduce that resolution and move its adoption.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole with the second. Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted and we thank the football association for that donation. Okay, next on the agenda are the financial reports and bills and Sue Nelson, our business manager is here.
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the July two thousand fifteen treasures report and single checks, wire transfers from July tenth through August sixth and the payment of the July twenty-eighth and August eleventh bills. I'll begin with July two thousand fifteen treasures report. And you have a list there of each of our funds, the different accounts which in each fund and the cash balance at the end of July. And then on the flip side of that, you have the transfers and wires from July tenth to August sixth. I'll just highlight a few of them. The second one down is on, July twenty-third is for our bond payments. That was actually wired out, but you did see that with your July fourteenth bills. A few down from there, on July twenty-eighth, I wired some money in from the liquid asset fund to our local bank. One down from there is the payment of our retirees that retired at the end of FY fifteen. That money goes into the Minnesota State Retirement Account. And I have FY sixteen there and that's actually FY fifteen. A couple down from there, you can see our P card payment that went out on August fourth in the amount of three thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars. And I have those details here in a little bit. And then you can see our total payroll disbursement for the month of July was one million one hundred twelve thousand. Do you have any questions? And then you'll have a short register that will be single checks in July. And the first one is a select account VIBA. And what that is for is our retirees that have a district contribution. If they select an insurance that is a VIBA insurance and there's dollars available with that district contribution, some go into their VIBA account for their deductible. The second check there is for both mailing for the beginning of the school year for food service. And that's all I had on that register. Then you should have a P card register that starts with waste management. And the total of that register is the same amount that was on the wire document. A couple of them on the P card register, the waste management and Verizon, those are monthly expenses that you see every month. Some of the other ones are for lodging or meals or registration for some different trainings for employees. Any questions on the P card register? Okay, then moving to the payments dated July twenty-eighth, you do have two registers. That's because we're into FY sixteen, but we're still paying for things from the FY fifteen school year. So the check register that's dated school specialty, that is for FY fifteen. And the register, starting with Arnold Motor Supply, that's FY sixteen. And as you recall, we did not have a board meeting on July twenty-eighth. So what we do in the absence of a board meeting is Julie comes in and we review, review everything before the payments are mailed out. So looking at the FY fifteen register, that first payment to school specialty that does not have a check number, that's because it was paid through Commerce Bank. That is some capital outlay items for the elementary school, some desks and chairs. And then down a few, check number fifty-seven three twenty-two made out to Bargain Incorporated. That's for the parking lot seal coating that we did district wide and also the striping. That's all I had on that register unless you have a question. Okay, then moving to the ones for FY sixteen, that starts with Arnold Motor Supply. I just have a couple to bring to your attention there. Check number fifty-seven three forty-two made out to Discovery Education. This is an annual renewal that we do. It's really for video links that teachers use to enhance lessons. Like they can do a video link to like the National Geographic or if their topic is World War Two, they can find a video link on, on that topic. So it's really a resource to extend the learning for students. And check number fifty-seven three forty-eight, this is made out to IXL Learning. And this again is another annual renewal. And this, these programs help build and strengthen reading and math skills. It can be anywhere between remedial all up to excelling and in between. And this lines up with the Minnesota state standards. Any questions on that register? Okay, then you have two more registers. They're dated today, August eleventh. The FY fifteen payments are the, where it starts, the INS group. And that payment is for planning and project management for that, the parking lot seal coating. That's all I had on that register. And then moving to the register for FY sixteen, that starts with select account. I have a couple to bring to your attention. It's a Commerce Bank payment, so there's not a check number, but it's Pioneer Manufacturing Company. This is paint for the football field. And then check number fifty-seven three eighty-two, that's made out to Byte Speed. What this is for is the high school has installed four monitors that will stream a variety of, variety of information. Things like announcements, upcoming events, sporting events, it could have pictures, menus, reminders, all kinds of things for students. And the monitors are being paid for by the Fairmont Substance Abuse Coalition. So their messages will also be streamed on the monitors. And as I mentioned, there's four monitors and one will be located in the seven, grade seven through nine locker area. One in the ten through twelve locker area, one in the commons and also one on first floor, like when you're walking from the locker area into the academic area. So next time you're at the high school, you have to check that out. And just a couple more here. Check number fifty-seven four twenty-eight made out to school datebook. This is for the planners for the Fairmont Junior Senior High School. And we have paid for those and then we are reimbursed by Youth First for those. And then check number fifty-seven four thirty-three made out to the visual identity vault. This is for T-shirts for the fifteen, sixteen school year that pets will be selling. Do you have any questions for me? Prior to the meeting, Julie and I did review everything that we hadn't reviewed previously.
If there are no other questions or anything, then I would make a motion to approve the July two thousand fifteen treasures report and the single checks, wire transfers for July tenth, two thousand fifteen to August sixth, two thousand fifteen and payment of July twenty-eighth and August twenty, August eleventh, two thousand fifteen bills.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Danielle. Motion by Julie, second by Danielle to approve the treasures, July two thousand fifteen treasures report. Any additional comments or questions for Sue or Julie on all of that information? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue. Moving on the agenda to old business, we have nothing, but we have several new business items to talk about. So the first one is a long-term facilities and maintenance plan, Julie?
Yes. During the special session this spring of our state legislature, they established a long-term facilities maintenance revenue program for school districts. And this program replaces the current health and safety, health and safety revenue, deferred maintenance revenue and alternative facilities bonding and loving pro, levy programs. And so this is set to start in the fiscal year seventeen. And so as part of that, we've already started working on that and operations committee has met. And Sue and Dave Turnberg have put together, they've always had kind of a plan, which they knew things are, but didn't quite go out that length. And so this is good for us because we wanted to keep doing some long distance range planning for our needs and that, for our buildings and our grounds, so. We did propose for a ten-year plan for allowable projects and revenue to be generated. That is in appendix B. As you can see, the big sheet, and we did review all that. That was there. Some of those things, like I said, are things we've already been doing, that's already been on our radar already. But it's just a good way to keep things in line. We don't have to do each program as it's set out in there. As time goes, we can kind of, you know, like, and like we have in the past, you know, kind of choose our product, projects and stuff for what we feel is important at that time or what needs to be maybe moved up or moved back or, you know. But it's just a good way to keep our buildings and, and things in good repair, so. And because of that, I want to make a motion to approve the district's long-term facilities maintenance plan as is presented in appendix B there.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. I have a motion by Julie, second by Dan to approve the long-term facilities maintenance plan in appendix B. I have a question. So will we do this every year? Does this, do you update it every year? So at this time, will be?
Well, it'll be updated every year. I don't know if we'll have to come for board approval exactly at this point.
I think that we have to submit an official plan.
Oh, yeah.
To the state. So it'll be submitted to the state every two years, but we will get, get that from Dave Turnberg and ourselves every year.
Like I said, we've, we've been doing this already in the past. It's just, it's just that now the state has given us authority to, you know, levy for a little bit more and, you know, provide for that. And like I said, given us an avenue to do that long range planning.
So we'll submit it this year?
Right. It has to be submitted by Friday. And part of the reason for that is even though it's for FY seventeen, because it's levy, that has to go into our levy cycle. And in September, the board will approve our proposed levy. So we need to submit that so it can get into that levy already. So yeah, as a board and as a district, we'll definitely look at it every year and then submit it to Department of Education every other year. Or if they change, you know, maybe they won't need it every other year, but whatever is required, but definitely internally, we'll look at it every year.
Just a comment too, the spreadsheet shows some, basically some big numbers, but there's some really good detail behind each number. And Dave Turnberg has a very big list. And I would just want to thank the legislature and the governor Dayton because of all the things that they did for education, which was a pretty good year for public schools this year with a two percent increase in funding on the formula. But this was very important because in the past, the twenty-five largest school districts in the state, they could levy any amount of money to fix any of their buildings, basically anytime they wanted to. And there was no limit. And the other three hundred districts really struggled to maintain, you know, the facilities. And this is so important because many of the smaller districts and the districts in outer, outstate Minnesota or greater Minnesota are, are not big districts. And so it's a way to treat us a little more equitably. And so this is great news for school districts in greater Minnesota. And it's going, going to let us hopefully be able to maintain our buildings at a faster clip and maybe not have to build so many new buildings.
And one thing to add to that is it's, it rolls in over three years. For FY seventeen, the funding max is a hundred ninety-three dollars by our adjusted pupil unit. And then FY eighteen, it's two hundred ninety-two dollars and FY nineteen and beyond, it's three hundred and eighty dollars. So what that means for us the first year, it's like three hundred and seventy thousand. Well, our projects are, are more than that. So we'll have to decide, are we going to do all of them and use other funding? Or will we need to push one into FY eighteen? Well, then FY eighteen, we could generate five hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then after that, it's in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. And then we'll also have to look at that along with our levy to see, you know, how much do we want our levy to increase? So it's, 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 it's great news, but it's So it's, 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 it's great news, but it's, you know, we'll still be, you'll be hearing a lot about it.
Yeah, there's still a lot of work to be done, but we at least have some place markers for certain projects too. And a better understanding of how we can move forward too, so.
And doesn't this also, Joe, kind of streamline the amount of, I, I mean, we had so many different categories before, and this basically is all more of a, a one-stop shop, if you will, to, to make sure that we have, the, the, well, the, the resources that we need, especially for, you know, just the simple stuff like if the roof is leaking, we don't have to go out for an election to fix the roof now. I mean, that is so big that we can not have to have huge arguments about that. Some, you know, something so simple as that, we can actually, you know, go ahead and have the authority to fix that and worry and argue about other things, I suppose.
Right, and we actually have that plan on the roof renovation that we've worked with Tremco already. And we have, the Operations Committee saw the, both of our sites, and it's all lined up on which year we would do which project, and it would stretch out over a number of years. And so yeah, we definitely went through a lot more detail with the whole Operations Committee. Because some things, like the parking lot, that's every so many years, so you know, you just plug those in. And so really for the school district, it's, it's great news for all school districts that we have this levy authority.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I have a motion by Julie, second by Dan, to approve that the long-term facilities maintenance plan as presented in Appendix B. So all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is a grant approval. Danielle?
CER is the recipient of an eighteen hundred dollar grant from the Martin County Area Foundation. These dollars will be used to provide free cooking classes for youth and families through the Martin County Extension Program. CER will be presented with a big check for the grant amount at the fair on August twenty-second. I make a motion to approve the acceptance of the eighteen hundred dollar grant from Martin County Area Foundation to CER.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dan. A motion by Danielle, second by Dan, to approve the grant from the Martin County Area Foundation to CER. And we thank them for that grant too. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, then we have some personnel issues to finish up before the school year starts. Rufus, you want to talk about resignations?
Okay, two resignations. Kristi Rowling, special ed teacher, has tendered her resignation effective July twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, to accept a job with GHEC School District. She has been employed in our district since two thousand thirteen. And therefore offer a motion to approve the resignation of Kristi Rowling, special ed teacher, effective July twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. Motion by Rufus, second by Nicole, to approve the resignation of Kristi Rowling on July twenty-eighth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Second one?
Second one, Keisha Glinky indicated her intentions to resign effective August sixth, two thousand fifteen, to accept a teaching position at SPEC in Bridges, in the Bridges Program in Winnebago. Keisha has been employed with our district for the past two years, working as a part-time PAC coordinator and media technician. I offer a motion to approve the resignation of Keisha Glinky, media technician, effective August sixth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. Motion by Rufus, second by Nicole, to approve the resignation of Keisha Glinky, effective August sixth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And we have several employments to talk about, Nicole.
The first is a recommendation from Principal Davison that Laura Christians be hired as an instructional supervisory aide at Fairmont Elementary. Laura holds a degree in childhood education from Iowa Lakes Community College, and since two thousand ten has been employed as a teacher in the toddler room at Stepping Stones Learning Center. I therefore move to approve the employment of Laura Christians as an instructional supervisory aide effective September eighth, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of step one.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. Motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Laura Christians. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The next one?
The second is also a recommendation by Principal Davison that Jill Christensen be hired as an instructional supervisory aide at Fairmont Elementary. She holds a BA degree in education from Minnesota State University Mankato. Her work experience includes serving as a personal care assistant at REM and working as a teacher in the toddler room at Stepping Stones Learning Center. I move to approve the employment of Jill Christensen as an instructional supervisory aide effective September twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of step one.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. A motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the employment of Jill Christensen. Is that the right start date, September twenty-second? They just, some just start later than others? That is correct, okay. Just because school starts on the eighth, I was just curious about that. Okay, supervisory aide starts at a different time. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next one?
The, number three is Principal Jim Davison is also recommending that Deb Hartwig be hired as an instructional supervisory aide at Fairmont Elementary. Deb holds a degree in tailoring management and is a licensed cosmetologist. I move to approve the employment of Deb Hartwig as instructional supervisory aide effective September eighth, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of step one.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. Motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the employment of Deb Hartwig. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, you can keep at it.
Principal Davison is also recommending that Megan Thinkbinder be hired as a reading interventionalist aide for this school year. She will be taking the position previously held by Jennifer Fries, while Jennifer Fries works in Jill Christensen's previous responsibilities as a reading interventionist. Megan holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Mount Marty College in South Dakota. She has past experience working as a fourth grade teacher and an extended learning aide in the Sioux Falls School District. I therefore move to approve, approve the employment of Megan Thinkbinder as a reading interventionalist aide effective September eighth, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of step one.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. Motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Megan Thinkbinder. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next one?
Superintendent Brown is recommending that Terry Wolf be hired as an elementary media technician to replace Keisha Glinky. Terry began working with our district last year as a title aide, and prior to that, she worked ten years as a paraprofessional in the Cobb County School District in Marietta, Georgia, and has also served in the same capacity with the Robinsdale School District in Minnesota. I move to approve the employment of Terry Wolf as a media technician effective September eighth, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of step one.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Danielle. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Danielle, to approve the employment of Terry Wolf. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next one?
Principal Jim Davison is recommending that Robin Armitage be hired as an elementary special education teacher, replacing Kristi Rowling. Robin holds a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from Ashford University. She has been employed with Head Start for the past fifteen years, serving as the lead early childhood teacher since two thousand ten. Robin currently holds a community expert license to serve EBD and autistic students, and she intends to continue taking classes to be fully certified as a special education teacher in two thousand sixteen. I move to approve the employment of Robin Armitage as an elementary special education teacher, effective August seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of BA step one.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. Motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the employment of Robin Armitage. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next one?
And the last recommendation for the evening also comes from Principal Davison. He's recommending that Brooke Schultz be hired to teach fifth grade, replacing Michelle Baker. Brooke holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in elementary education and communication, arts and literature from Bethany Lutheran College, and a master's degree in differentiated instruction from Concordia University in St. Paul. She previously taught English at Blue Earth Middle School, special ed at Elmore Academy, and fifth and sixth grades at Emmanuel Courtland. I move to approve the employment of Brooke Schultz as a fifth grade teacher, effective August seventeen, two thousand fifteen, at a salary of MA step fourteen.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julie. Motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Brooke Schultz. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Then the next on our agenda are contracts. Rufus, you want to talk about those?
Staff welfare approved contract for the superintendent, the highlights of which are as follows. District paid contribution for health hospitalization will be deposited into the appropriate account. If the superintendent goes on Medicare. Number two, district will continue to pay the premium for one hundred thousand dollars of life insurance upon retirement until age seventy. Number three, a thousand dollar annual increase in district contribution towards 403B. And the last point, two-point-five percent annual salary increase. So I make a motion to approve the, the new contract as described. Three-year superintendent's contract for the years two thousand sixteen through two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. A motion by Rufus, second by Dan, to approve the three-year superintendent's contract for Joe Brown for the years two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion or questions on that item?
Only on the condition that you can tell us what the MSRSHCSP stands for.
Minnesota State Retirement System Health Care Savings Plan.
I think it's the longest acronym I've ever seen.
Yes.
All right, very good. So the motions by Rufus, second by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The next one?
Staff welfare also approved a new contract for our business manager, the specifics of which are, number one, addition of one floating holiday, and two, district will continue to pay the premium for two hundred thousand of life insurance, two hundred thousand dollars of life insurance upon retirement until, until age seventy. Number three, a thousand dollar annual increase in district contribution towards 403B and a two-point-five percent annual salary increase. I make a motion to approve this two-year contract for the business manager for years two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. A motion by Rufus, second by Nicole, to approve the two-year contract for business manager Sue Nelson for the years two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen. Any further discussion or questions on that item? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda are board committee reports. And the first one is the Hormel Institute tour, which I took on the July twenty-third with several people from the Science Department, Superintendent Brown, and some other community members. It was very, it was a beautiful tour. It was very wonderful. It was a beautiful day, and the building is a gorgeous building. And it's next door to the corporate quarters, corporate headquarters for Hormel, but it's not connected to Hormel. It was started by Mr. Hormel back in nineteen forty-two. But, and it started in his horse barn, which they converted into a lab system, and now they've added on and they're expanding again. And so all of the people in there, just what they do is research on foods, and they're linked to cancer and cancer research. And it was just, it's so interesting to watch, go through. You can see through the windows what, all the things that they do. Just wonderful people that were sharing information. And I think our new science teacher for the sixth grade is going to be taking the sixth grade to tour that this year. So that will be good for kids, to get them interested in being researchers and scientists. It was just very neat to see that. And most of the people there were from, they're not from Austin, Minnesota, or Fairmont, Minnesota. They're from all over the world that work there, so very, very neat. And so their mission is to imagine a world without cancer, which would be a wonderful world. So they're, they're doing lots of wonderful work. And we even had a nice snack that had some of the things, the foods that they think help prevent cancers, or it's dark chocolate, mushrooms, ginger, tomatoes, onions, walnuts, cranberries, broccoli, carrots, spinach, peppers, blueberries, and strawberries. But that wasn't the whole thing. It was chocolate and ginger and cranberries and walnuts. It was, it was very good. Yeah, very good. Very interesting and very enlightening. A hundred percent of the donations, if you make a ten-dollar donation to the Hormel Institute, it all goes towards research. Their, their operating is through the Hormel Foundation, which the, the money is, that helps, that's how they operate. So if you give ten dollars to research, it goes to research, so, yeah, it's very cool. So, yeah. Do you have anything to add on that, Day?
Well, the Hormel Institute, it's been around since nineteen forty-two, but they're in the process of expanding. They're actually doubling the size. They currently have a hundred and sixty employees. And I would guess probably half of them are from China or the fur, you know, the Asian countries. And, and they're also building a forty-two-unit condominium complex on-site so that the researchers that, that come in will have a place to live. The housing's pretty tight right now in the Austin area. And remember, these researchers that come in, they can only work if they have research grant money. And so they have to write grants in order for them to get their team employed. But have you ever been to a cleaner place?
No.
I, I, I mean, it was way beyond hospital clean. Everything sparkled, everything was just brilliantly clean. It was just, it was amazing.
And they had, the, the video that we saw was in three D, and we had to wear three D glasses, but they, you know, just show all the technologies that they can use, like, and, you know, the ladies that was giving us the tour, I forget her name, but.
Gail Dennison.
Gail Dennison. But she goes, just think what, like even when you receive something in like a forty thousand dollar mouse. You know, it, it, they have, it's a huge business there, and it is fascinating, just fascinating. And the sixth graders will love going there to see that. Just to watch the three D video is incredible too, so, very neat, very cool. Very happy to be invited to that, so I thank Superintendent Brown for helping organize that. All right, Operations Committee meeting, Dan?
Hey, Operations Committee meeting took place on July thirtieth. The bulk of the meeting was about the long-term facilities management review that we did earlier that was in Appendix B of our packet tonight. And Dave Turnberg going over that with us. And we talked a little bit about some of the projects that are potentially on the docket with that. So it was a very nice way to kind of lay out a little bit further in advance, I think. I think now, previously, we've been doing it about on a five or six-year-ahead basis. And, and this with the new state legislation put us at ten years, but that's, but that's quite all right. And we were able to get this approved tonight, so we can send it off to the state. And yes, the, the plan is reviewed annually and submitted every other year. Says so right in the minutes here, so my memory was right. And the, we talked a little bit about the hunt farm. Dave Turnberg informed us that they'd had beamers out to the property to remove several beaver dams, one of which they couldn't get to because it was a little wet in the area, but they'll be doing that to help the water to continue to flow through there and keep the land from flooding. And we had a discussion on the rental rates for the, the farmer that we has, that we have renting that hunt farm property. And from what I understand, that, that renter is happy with the current arrangement, and we will plan on doing that at the same rate for next year. So that'll mean we'll get the same amount of money for our projects that are asked for by different teachers and such, so that's good news.
All right, any questions for Dan or any additions? All right, next one is the MSBA Summer Conference, which was Monday, August third. And Superintendent Brown and I attended that. It was, it starts at nine, ends at four, but a day packed full of information. The first speaker was probably the most fun. It was Dr. John Draper. And it's crucial conversations about public education, and he was very enlightening, you know. he was very enlightening, you know, how, how can we look at it differently? You know, what we do, how do we just look at it differently? And that was very good. We also had some information from the state demographer about the future and what's the destiny of the state, and so lots of statistics and trends, information on that. Talked about the legislative session through what happened last year. Then we could go to all different kinds of sessions, and the Commissioner of Education, Brenda Casilius, was there and talked about some of the things that are happening in public education in the state of Minnesota. Went to a session on legal issues and how that impacts what we do day-to-day, and that was very interesting. And also, I went to a session on bullying, how one school district, how, what their approach to their bullying policy and how they approached that from the Anoka Henepin district, so that was very interesting. And then a whole session on social media and how to communicate via social media, so that was interesting too. Anything else that you?
Well, the state demographer was interesting, and she's relatively new, because we used to have, remember, we used to have Tom Gillespie, and Tom Stinson used to do a Tom and Tom Show. And this young lady is, she's a pretty good presenter.
Susan Brower.
Yeah, Susan Brower. But she told an old Tom Gillespie story about, you know, they've done a lot of research of demography here in the state of Minnesota, and what they've studied is that they find out that every year, people in Minnesota get a year older. But she pointed out that, it's kind of a joke. She pointed out that there are three big trends happening in Minnesota, is that we're, we're becoming much older, as, you know, we have a lot of people that are past the age of sixty-five and above, that we're much more diverse, and the trend is that we're going to get more and more diverse racially, and our poverty rate is increasing. And so those are the three big picture trends happening in Minnesota right now. But that was interesting. And it's always fun to, it's always, to me, it's always fun to meet with other school board members and other superintendents, and I always, and I followed it up, the next two days, I stayed for the superintendent's conference, and I just, I have to tell you, we're so fortunate to be here in Fairmont, because our finances are in great shape, and our facilities are in great shape, and we have wonderful faculty and support staff. That is not, that is not true in many districts in Minnesota. And, you know, knock on wood, we just, we're very fortunate here in Fairmont. We have a lot going for us.
Yep. Very interesting. So, any questions about that? Okay, then the staff welfare committee meeting, Rufus?
Staff welfare committee met August sixth. We discussed superintendent and business manager contracts, the resignation and offers for employment. We met with a gal who, the prior two weeks, she was teaching an apps camp that was hosted by Martin County with funding through the Bladen Corporation. I think about eleven junior high, high school kids trying to develop an app for Martin County, which will be previewed at the Martin County Fair. And, and we met with her because she has some ideas about how coding can play an important role, the instruction of coding can play an important role in, in education, even at the elementary level. And so, you know, we hope to continue some dialogue with her, and, and there's apparently a group up in the metro that, you know, that is starting to talk about this, how to incorporate, you know, coding instruction at the elementary level and continue it through secondary. And then I think one last thing, we discussed the idea of, of doing a survey of our students, our parents, and our faculty, just to get a, a, get the pulse of the district, find out, you know, how we're doing, you know, where there may be some opportunities to, you know, to do a little bit better. And so we're hoping to roll that out if the board approves mid-year, and more, more, more of that to come.
And we'll be discussing a lot more what the survey questions will be, or the angles, or what we really need to find out, so, yeah. But we hope people participate too, because that's what really will help us determine what we're, how to set our goals again and be in the future, so. Any questions for the staff welfare committee? All right, then we had a town meeting in Sealan that, after that, and Superintendent Brown and Nicole and Dan and Rufus and I were down there, and we met with, oh, about five people from the Sealan community, and just sat and visited about, oh, twenty different topics in the hour. So we talked about the Community Service Day, driver's education, the FFA program, the greenhouse, student enrollment, bus routes, parking lots, retention pond, substitute teacher, new teachers, the graduation rate and dropout rate, credit recovery, area learning centers, student attendance, school shootings, violence on TV, building tours. And then probably the most interesting thing was a couple of the gentlemen there are Korean War veterans, and they would like to come and do a presentation to the eleventh grade students, so that's in the works. And one of our social studies teacher will be inviting them in, and they'll be having presentations on that. So that was very fun to hear about that. A few questions, very, very interesting, so very happy to run down there and meet those people, so. Any other questions or comments about that one? It's kind of fun, wasn't it?
I really enjoyed the format. It was just very, just, you know, kind of like sitting around having supper, you know?
Yep. They had a cookie and sat and visited, so that was very nice, yeah. And we thank those people that, that came out too, to, for coming and sharing their input there too. Anything else that needs to come before the board this evening? No? Okay, then I entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Dan, second by Rufus, to approve adjourned the school board meeting at six sixteen PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.[1725.28]